The Borough Council Meeting of January 27th, 2025. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Zuban.
Councilmember Branch?
Here.
Councilmember Janboi?
Here.
Councilmember Hyman?
Here.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Here.
Council President Delia?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here. I have a motion to open the agenda session.
I make a motion to open the agenda session.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda session is now open, is there anything for the agenda session?
Nothing from me, mayor.
Nothing from the council president, anything else from anyone else? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the agenda session?
I move to close the agenda session.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This time, I'd like to see Kevin B. Coleman, please, right at the front of the room, with any family or...
Grandma?
Grandma?
Kelly?
Call whomever you'd like up.
Yes.
We won't wear, who's holding the Bible?
Says he will hold a Bible.
Okay, so why don't you stand over here, because it's, A, we're trying to get him sworn in, we'll also want a nice picture, so you can stand over here.
Okay.
Yes. Grandma, you can come right here, Grandma.
Yeah.
And Kelly, you can come right next to Grandma. Yeah, that's fine. So, yeah, that's how I kept more of these, but I got the Bible on the other side.
Yeah, the right side.
I'm gonna stand over here, it's not making sense. Perfect.
Yes.
You can repeat after me, okay?
All right.
That's maneuvering going on. For pictures? Okay. I, Kevin B. Coleman?
I, Kevin B. Coleman.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the ordinances of?
And the ordinance of?
The Borough of Metuchen.
The Borough of Metuchen.
And obey all the rules?
And obey all the rules.
And regulations?
And regulations.
And lawful orders of?
And lawful orders of?
The Metuchen Police Department.
The Metuchen Police Department.
Faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge?
The duties of?
The duties of?
Metuchen Borough Police Officer.
Metuchen Borough Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, officer.
Thank you.
You can try. All right, it doesn't have to be perfect.
It's like that. Yeah, good enough.
Okay, just when you have a chance, officer, if you can just sign right here?
Absolutely.
Chief, deal with that, he'll figure it out. Are you official? All right, Chief, you're safe.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll see you guys in a second.
Kevin, you gotta stay up here and take this. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the council again, the mayor, the BA, for another process of going through and hiring another officer. Some of you have seen Kevin on some pictures on Insta already. He started the academy in August, went through the old-fashioned way where we send someone to the academy, not that anyone else didn't do it that way, but we sent someone to the academy. Graduated January, and he's been on the road since then. The one thing about Kevin is he's a lifelong resident like a few of us are. Graduated Metuchen High School in 2015 with my son Artie, so Kevin pretty much grew up in my backyard. He grew up on Dorm Avenue, about 10 houses down, so I got to see the entourage of his dad, his mom, and the eight of them walking down every day to, I mean, not every day, but every weekend to St. Francis for church, and they didn't miss a mass, and Kevin was probably the last one, always dad's whipping him up on it. I will say that I know that his parents are both looking down at the Klan, and couldn't be any more proud of you, I'm sure of that. Like I said, he graduated 2015 Metuchen High School, he is in the prestigious club of 100 wrestling wins, not many people reach that plateau. He also had one professional fighting match or bout, and he won by knockout. So there are a lot of interesting things about Kevin, he brings a lot of knowledge about this town, old-school knowledge, something that, you know, he'll be able to, you know, tell us about the history, a long time coming, you know, much like some of the other guys that are in Metuchen tonight, so I couldn't be more proud of you, Kev, and I'm looking forward to you serving this borough well, like I know you will.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
You know, swearing in police officers isn't the kind of thing you imagine when you take the position of being mayor, but it's one of the greatest honors that I have to be able to do that, and in this, you know, in working with our department, which is, you know, we always say it, but clearly one of the best law enforcement departments in the state of New Jersey, one of the most closely connected with its community, our work with this department continues, we have the most number of officers that this borough has had since the 1970s, which I consider to be an outstanding accomplishment, reflective of the work we're doing together to accommodate the needs that we have, and it's, and it's these kinds of relationships that are reflected in the work we do together. But with respect to Officer Coleman, if I could just say, I can't emphasize enough how important it was for us to be able to recruit one of our own, for someone who grew up, and in our conversation, I think, a couple of months ago, before you hit the academy in Cape May, one of the things that was just so wonderful to hear was the fact that you grew up here wanting to one day be a police officer in this town, and the idea of us seeing you achieve that dream is, is very inspiring, not to mention, I saw you wrestle a little bit, and certainly helped my son a couple of years ago, I don't even know if you remember that, you coached my son, and it's just wonderful to see someone from Metuchen grow up wanting to be an officer and have the opportunity to achieve that in front of all your fellow residents. Welcome, although I know you've always been here, but we're proud to have you, so thank you again. Brandon's gonna have you, if, Brandon's gonna, you're gonna hear from it later if you don't grab that microphone, chief, okay?
You know, there's a big commitment to, you know, building this town up, and we're moving forward, and there's a lot of building going on, but you haven't forgot the little things. This council has been behind DPW, you know, our schools, in effect, have done things, and our police department has grown with it, and we appreciate that, that means a lot to us, it means a lot to our morale, and you can see when they're out there and they're policing and they get involved, so thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, chief, we appreciate that. So at this time, I presume that some of you at least aren't here to see the rest of this council meeting, and that you're so proud of your, you're proud of your, your, your family member or a friend or just, you know, fellow resident, but I'm gonna invite everyone who's not staying for the rest of the council meeting, you're all free to do so, we'd love to have you, but if you have other places to be or somewhere to be, we'll invite you to leave now, and if you could just keep the noise down, I know everyone's excited, but we could keep the noise down until you get outside, it's not as cold as it's been the last couple of days. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we're gonna open the floor to public comment, anyone from the council chambers that's remaining who wishes to address the council, the microphone is yours, if you could just give your name and address for the record, please?
Either one?
Either one.
Hi, that's Mark Flaherty, 44 New York Avenue. So, mayor...
Just hold, excuse me, Mr. Flaherty, if you could just for a second?
Okay.
This always happens when a group of people leaves, so they, they're, you know, talking on their way out, which we understand, but I'd like you to have your full, your full opportunity.
You might wanna keep it off for pictures.
Chief, if you could close that door, we'd appreciate it, thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Flaherty, may continue.
Yeah, so thank you for posting videos from the mayor's convention, that was interesting. You mentioned discussing ideas for protecting us from an all-republican federal election, federal government, maybe you could share the ideas that you've come up with so far?
You're sorry, you said that I shared ideas, what? I'm just...
You, you discussed sharing ideas among the other mayors about how to protect us in New Jersey, in Metuchen particularly, from an all-republican federal government.
Okay, so is that your only question?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll respond. Thank you, so I didn't specifically say that I was looking to protect Metuchen, nor were the other mayors looking to protect their towns from an all-republican federal government, we were talking about the, the issues that the federal government raised, the new federal government raised for us as community leaders, it was a bipartisan group, it always is with the US Conference of Mayors, I have some people I've become friendly with on, you know, both sides of the aisle, and the purpose of that conference really is, they have two major meetings a year, there's one that is in a different location throughout the country each year, last year was in Kansas City, I think this year is somewhere in Florida, that's in the spring, but the one in Washington is in January every year, and the purpose of that meeting is for local mayors of all varying sizes to interact with, 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 with the federal office holders. And last year, the meeting was the first one I went to, and I found it to be extraordinary, the sessions, the discussions, they were great, they were helpful, they were informative, they were federal officials, cabinet officials, legislators from, you know, getting both sides of the aisle, spending a lot of time in the lobby, just talking, the access was incredible, the opportunity to speak about the issues you have and then share those with other people was great. Though, this year was very different, it was a, it was a very helpful conference in talking about what was going on, but there was a, there was a feeling by, again, mayors on both sides of the aisle, that there's something new going on in Washington, and, and I think there was a feeling that perhaps there was a concern over what to expect, and I think that's probably true, I haven't been here before during other experiences with transitions of administrations, but with this particular administration, with some of the threats, some of the, some of the rhetoric that's been said over the last, you know, however long, and, and with some of that actually being executed in the week or so since the new president has taken over, I think there's a feeling of, you know, of a, a need to at least be ready for aspects of federal involvement in local government that we hadn't previously experienced. And so, as a leader in this community, it's my responsibility to work with our council members to make sure that we have preparation and response to, to whatever's out there, whether it's a Democrat in the White House, a Republican in the White House, in Metuchen, we take care of our own, we're gonna work hard, I'll take guidance from working with other mayors, but none of my response to what I experienced was specific to a Republican administration, but it certainly was in response to this administration. At this time, I don't see any other members of the public wishing to address us, I'm gonna move on to council meeting minutes.
Thank you, mayor, I make a motion to approve Borough Council Meeting Minutes of December 9th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes, I abstain, I was not here.
Thank you very much, so for the record, Ms. Janboi abstains.
Thank you, mayor, I make a motion to approve Communications Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council president?
Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2025-02 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-02, Ordinance Amending the Code of the Borough of Metuchen and the Composition of the Arts Council.
Okay, at this time, we are going to open public hearing on Ordinance 2025-02, the second ordinance that we've had introduced this year, anybody wishing to address 2025-02 from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public hearing on 2025-02.
I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2025-02 on second reading and published according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, Ms. Zuban.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm excited for this one, Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2025-03 by title only?
Ordinance 2025-03, Ordinance of the Borough of Metuchen Authorizing Execution of a Rights of Way Agreement Between the Borough of Metuchen and Comcast of New Jersey, sorry, II LLC, to permit the installation, use, and maintenance of cable television and telecommunications facilities within public rights of way for purposes of providing cable television and telecommunications services.
Thank you, I move that Ordinance 2025-03 be passed on first reading, published according to law in a public hearing set down for Monday, February 10th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Before I ask for a roll call on this, this is a big one, I mean, we have a lot of sort of maintenance ordinances, like the last one with respect to the number of residents that we have on our arts council, but this one is something we've been working on for a long time, and I'm really proud of our administration for pushing through some of the legal issues that we have with complicated infrastructure matters like this, because yes, cable and internet is infrastructure, it's something that I have heard repeatedly from the moment I became mayor, and I'm sure that you as council members have heard it all the time as well, I know the council president and I have discussed this at length over the years, but having another provider, what, whatever people's opinions are of these specific providers, having a choice in this town is huge, we're not there yet because they have to lay wires first, but now that Comcast is coming, and I think their product is actually called Xfinity, although I don't know for sure, and we'll learn more, but it's important to be able to have choice, it's important to have competition, it's important to have something that will help us know that there's a place to turn when there's no service, I'll never forget the conversations I had with residents during the pandemic about the only choice that they had when they were frustrated in working from home, and as residents continue to work from home, although certainly in diminished capacity, diminished numbers, I, I know that, that internet has become even more significant than ever, and it will just continue to, to do so, so I'm just really, really excited, and I appreciate Comcast for working with us, I appreciate the council members for bearing with us, and I appreciate the administration and our, our council for working on this agreement with Comcast to allow this to happen, so anything from anyone else on this? No?
Could I just ask a question?
Yeah, council member.
So I recently had a question from a resident whose phone line didn't work anymore, so when the person from, you know, her service came, they said they were not repairing copper wires anymore, and they wanted her to get a box that supposedly was gonna help her get phone service, but the person said to her that the borough said that Verizon Fios could not come in, which I did not think was true, and based on how hard you have worked on this, I would imagine that the person who came to service her home may have been just saying that to her.
Yeah, there's no truth, there's no truth to that at all.
I'm sure not.
I'll just say this, that Verizon, I remember speaking to former Mayor O'Brien, that's how far back this goes, that former Mayor O'Brien was talking to me a number of years ago about what they felt was a huge accomplishment when they got Verizon, if you will, to come in and install Fios in town, and then Fios as a business model changed, so, you know, I, I'm not an expert on telecommunications or, you know, the status of this, but I understand that it costs a significant amount of money for a company like Verizon to install the infrastructure necessary to begin providing the service, and when they started doing the cost-benefit analysis, and they did that cost-benefit analysis, or at least the one that determined, they made them determine they were gonna either slow down their development or stop their development of the Fios program, was before they ended up actually doing the work in Metuchen. Never was there a time where we told Verizon Fios that they couldn't come here, and I could tell you, I could, I, without speaking to Mayor Camarano or Mayor, you know, Mayor Vahala, that no one would ever do that, because all the residents want is a choice, and if there was an opportunity to bring in Fios, then great, and again, the Fios technology, from what I could tell, and we have people who know a lot more about technology on this council than I, is, is, is already being outpaced by, by the ones available by, through Optimum and through Comcast, so, you know, we, we welcome as much competition as possible. There was also this myth of a monopoly in town that the council president and I have discussed, where the idea was that people just assumed that only one cable provider could be here at a time, it's just not true, it's just that for whatever business reason, the cable and internet providers made a business decision to not, you know, spend the money on infrastructure in places like Metuchen to create that, that competition, for whatever reasons, that calculation has changed, and now that Comcast is, is coming to Metuchen, we're thrilled to have them, just like we're thrilled to have our current provider, and the two of them can hopefully provide even better service and opportunities to all the residents who may not have otherwise had them.
Good.
Great, thank you, any other questions or comments from the council members? Okay, seeing none, we've had a motion and a second, and at this point, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Do we have a, I think we had a roll call on that one over there?
No.
We did not.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jethwani?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to the report of the borough administrator.
Yeah, I actually have some things to say tonight, I'll be quick, delay, there's gonna be delay, Grove Avenue Bridge is being replaced by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, it was slated to happen as soon as closed, as soon as school closed in 2025, but when they went out to bid, all of the, the vendors who bid on the contract had said the timeframe was too short for them to get all of the materials that they needed, so it's been pushed to 2026, so that, that is delayed, it will result in 10 weeks of a full closure on Grove Avenue, so we don't have that to look forward to for this summer, it'll be next summer. The next thing is, I just want to remind all of the residents, if they have a soar backup or soar emergency, they need to make sure that if it's after hours, they should call the non-emergent police number, which is 732-632-8500, someone had recently had an issue, and I was getting ready to leave for the evening, it was 5 o'clock, and they emailed me, this is not the method to get a quick response, normally what happens is dispatch, when you call that number, they will get the information, and they will dispatch our DPW who are on call for soar-related issues, so I just make sure, please, please, call the number, do not send an email, it's not the most expedient way to get your issues resolved, and when it comes to soar and sewage, you want that taken care of pretty quickly. The next is just a reminder, with the snow that's upon us now, we do have an ordinance in place that requires that you shovel your sidewalk and do snow removal within a 24-hour period after the snow has completed its falling, so please make sure that you, everyone does that, and it's really important, especially in those main thoroughfares, Main Street, Amboy Avenue, where people use that to walk to the train and other, you know, it's important for everyone who has a sidewalk, but most importantly, for those main thoroughfares, and I just remind people because we will be doing enforcement to make sure that people comply with our code enforcement group. And then lastly, on February 6th, we are gonna be holding our CDBG public meeting to solicit feedback from the public on how we should use our CDBG funds, which is a federal grant, there are specific categories, the past couple of years, we've used it mostly to renovate bathrooms at the library, we use some money to renovate the bathrooms at the senior center, but we have these public meetings every year to solicit feedback and input from the public, so please come out, it's at 10 a.m. here in council chambers, again, February 6th, 10 a.m., thank you.
Thank you very much, council president?
Thank you, mayor, just one update, Lunar New Year begins on January 29th, and on Saturday, February 1st, between 12:30 and 2 o'clock, the MDA is going to be celebrating Lunar New Year with music and dancers, they've done this a few years now, and it's always a really great time, so if you are around on Saturday between 12:30 and 2, come downtown, check out the festivities, spend some money, that's my update.
Thank you very much, council member Candell, she's not here, council member Jethwani.
Thank you, mayor, yeah, just a couple notices about the, Metuchen Library is, is in the process of a three-year strategic plan development and wants input from the public via community survey, so you can visit the library webpage for a link to the survey or a QR code, individuals can also take the survey while they're in the library, and all of this is to help make sure the library is providing valuable services to the community and identifying areas of improvement, everyone who participates will be entered in a drawing to win an Apple iPad Mini, so some incentive there. A couple of events were also related to Lunar New Year, at the library, Saturday, February 1st at 2 p.m., the Korean Spirit and Culture Promotion Project will be there to help make, help individuals make lotus lanterns, materials will be provided, and registration is required for that, and then on Saturday, February 8th, in celebration of Black History Month, at 2 p.m., the library will present an interactive music concert exploring the vibrant sounds of Mardi Gras in New Orleans, featuring the Patrick Carson Trio, and all are welcome, registration's encouraged, and just a note that tickets are now on sale for the Friends of the Metuchen Library Get Lit event, the theme is Drinking Detectives, it'll be held Saturday, February 22nd, from 3 to 5 at Haley's, and folks can, we encourage people to buy tickets early since this event is pretty much always sold out, and just want to mention that last Thursday, the, well, the Historic Preservation Committee, the, you know, soon to be renamed, committee, will met for the first time this year with four new members, and while the group is still getting its bearings and orienting to the ongoing efforts of the committee, the members were really energized and looking forward to developing new ideas and priorities, and that's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, council member Hyman?
Thank you, the parade committee met on Tuesday, January 21st, to discuss what they learned from their, their holiday parade, which was, thank goodness, the first parade they had since 2021, and it was very successful, they especially enjoyed all the entertainment that they hired and found that to be really enriching the event, not the parade, and the event that happened on the plaza, now they're planning, can you believe it, the Memorial Day Parade, which will happen at 10 a.m. on Monday, May 26th, they, they agreed on the theme, which will be Hometown Heroes, hopefully complementing the celebration of Metuchen's 125th birthday on March 20th of this year, we've suggested incorporating this milestone into the parade, perhaps having a float to showcase the large printouts of the town through the years, so they're looking, you know, they're exchanging ideas, really excited and planning already for Memorial Day Parade, they're reaching out to some of the entertainers, including the Tinsel Toons, for ideas of what they participated in for the Memorial Day Parade, and they will soon be contacting the art teachers for all the schools regarding the poster contests, I know it's cold, but it's, yes, we're planning for Memorial Day Parade. The next meeting for the parade committee will be on February 18th at 7:15 here at the borough. The cares committee successfully has launched in cooperation with Wellspring, their Strengthening Families Program, the first session was last Thursday, but they do have room for more families, the program is for families with children aged 10 to 14, and it will occur on the next six Thursdays at 6 p, from 6 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., it's an interactive program meant to improve communication, handle stress, build trust with the families, each family, each session will begin with a family dinner, if you are interested, if you know a family that might be interested, you can reach out to Heather Ward of Wellspring, again, it's Heather Ward, and her number is 732-254-3344, extension 120, or reach out to me and I'll help you get in touch with her. The next meeting of the cares committee will be Thursday, March 12th, no, Wednesday, March 12th, at 7:15, and the next Board of Health meeting will be Thursday, March 13th at 7:30 p.m., thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, council member Janboi?
Okay, the Shade Tree Commission has their spring planting lined up, we have 41 confirmed trees on the list, so we're very excited about getting those into the ground, and I'll let you know when they're gonna be exactly having the planting, and the Environmental Commission had their reorganization meeting, and they elected Abby Nakvi as the new chair, and we also welcome new member, Thomas Coughlin, and he's the representative from the Planning Board who also sits on the Environmental Commission that keeps the Environmental Commission, you know, up to date on activities going on with the Planning Board. The seniors will be meeting February 12th at 4 p.m. at the senior center. The seniors will be meeting February 12th at 4:00 p.m. at the Senior Center, and I would also like to remind people that anyone aged 60 and older is welcome to join the Senior Center. It's free for Metatchen residents, and they have a lot of activities, they have exercise classes, they have a monthly birthday party luncheon, they have trips, and an art class on Thursdays, and they also have ceramics. So come on down and maybe take a little visit, see if it's something you'd be interested in joining. And also, as usual, I want to include the food bank at the Presbyterian Church. Things that they need currently are peanut butter and jelly, they need canned meat and fish, like Spam and chicken and tuna. Believe it or not, SpaghettiOs are high on the list, cereal, coffee, and personal grooming items, because they are not covered by SNAP benefits. They do not cover personal items for hygiene and whatever, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Branch?
Thank you. I haven't had Spam in a long time.
Buy one, donate one.
I know, yeah, I should. Okay, good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First update from the Metatchen Arts Council, is once again participating in the mid-multitown Windows of Understanding Project. Metatchen Contribution is about taking care of our planet, and is being created by our local Girl Scouts under the guidance of Metatchen teacher, teaching artist Joseph Kaschenova. The work will hang at Berkshire Hathaway on Middlesex Avenue with a reception on February 22nd from noon to 3:00 p.m., so please make sure to catch that. Human Relations Commission, celebrating Black History Month. The subcommittee was comprised of the high school liaisons to the HRC. They've created 15 profiles of modern, prominent people to highlight in businesses downtown. So downtown, during the month of February, take a look at those those portraits. HRC would also like to remind everybody that today is Anniversary Liberation of Auschwitz Berkina. I don't know if I got that correct. Okay? So United Nations General Assembly designated January 27th the annual, the anniversary of liberation of Auschwitz-Berkina in 1945. It's International Holocaust Remembrance Day, a time to remember the 6 million Jewish victims of the Holocaust and the millions of other victims of Nazi persecution. Last updates from the Recreation Commission, they announced that registration for the Sweetheart Dance is open, as my daughter reminds me all the time, so you will see me there if you register. Please go to the Borough website on its spring activities. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember, this has been an extraordinary month for accomplishment in the Borough, and I just don't, you know, like to spend that much time on my report, but I'm going to say, in addition to the Comcast matter, which I'll skip over, because we just went over that and how important that was to be able to bring some, you know, competition, we also finally filed condemnation proceeding against the owner of the gas station. It's the last resort, I explained this on social media to the public, but is certainly an extra, last resort, but the property's polluted, the owner did not, you know, come to the table as the way we had hoped over the last six years. There would be times where we we felt like we were at the 10-yard line, the 5-yard line, and then another football field was built for us, and it was just so frustrating. And now that things are really moving along with the Forum Theater, we decided that it was finally time, after fair warning of over a year and a half ago, where we finally, this council adopted an ordinance permitting us to move forward as needed after an additional round of of good faith negotiations by the Borough. So the gas station issue will be resolved in the next few months, we expect. Number one, maybe a year. Number two is, speaking of the Forum Theater, tomorrow night is the first public session for the Forum Theater. We put a tremendous amount of time into ensuring that that is a productive conversation with residents. They'll have an opportunity to really, truly interact with representatives from throughout the Borough, and and also people from the state and the county. We have the Middlesex County coming, the arts program there. We have representatives from the EDA, the Economic Development Authority will be there. We have representatives from DevCo, our redeveloper on this. We've got the Metatchen Downtown Alliance, we've got people from the Arts Council who I'll be talking to after this meeting, because they're meeting simultaneously, I understand, Councilmember Branch, right now.
Yes, indeed.
And we, so we have so many different opportunities to 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 interact with this project, that if you're at all interested in either the project itself, or the aspects of the projects, or the ripple effects of the project, or anything with this project, come. Okay, we also have our planners there, they'll be helping and guiding. It's going to be similar, like a museum format, where you show up, similar to what we did with Goulton a number of years ago, which we found to be tremendously successful, and it's become almost a model for other regional community events like these, and we're proud of that. It starts off with a 10-or-so-minute description of everything, an overview, just like when you see that movie when you enter the museum, and then you get let out in the museum to interact and give yourself some context, and then there'll be stations, like a science fair-type model, around the gymnasium at Edgar Middle School, but it's 6:30 to 8:30 Tuesday and Thursday, surprise them with that, Tuesday and Thursday, 6:30 to 8:30, and I really, really encourage you to be there. And people have asked, do I have to be at both of them? No. Do I have to be for all of them, for all of it? No. Come as you can, we're doing it on two nights intentionally, get as many people as possible, we'll do as much as we can to sort of capture it, but, and put it on a recording through Metatchen Media, but it's really intended to be interactive. So if you could be there, please, please be there, because we need the feedback to be able to take our next steps, it's incredibly important. So so that's that, and we're really looking forward to it. The next thing is the Metatchen is America Initiative, which is really gaining steam. Was really excited when I showed up at my son's Metatchen floor hockey game at, and the frozen tundra of Charles parking lot, Charles Field parking lot, which, you know, very cold in those sweatshirts, but the kids are having a great time, and all the sweatshirts have the Metatchen is America patch, and we're working with other recreational programs to to integrate that into their their 2025 and even 26 activities. Just to remind everyone, Metatchen is America is designed to be a, almost a two-year celebration of Metatchen and its role in America, and the the concept is that, you know, Metatchen is a literally half America's age. We're going to be 125 on March 20th, and you look at that seal, you'll see our birthday is March 20th, 1900, so it'll be 125 this year, and then the United States will be semi-susquintennial, will be 250 on July 4th, 2026, and we're trying, I finally got the word right, I know, I know. I've worked on that, at the mayor's conference, actually. And and the idea is that we are trying to show where Metatchen is, and we're just a quintessential American town, and then how we're projecting ourselves forward in the future, so, I mean, all kinds of observance and celebration of that, we really hope people appreciate it and and get involved. So if you're an organization, or you're any part of this town in different ways, we'd love to engage you in that process. Of course, the snowstorm, which was sort of a storm, we've had worse, knock wood, but our chief is here, and we work closely together as our, as he doubles as our Office of Emergency Management Coordinator. We worked very, very well this year, I was really impressed with our DPW, who came out, just the timing was right, pre-salting, we worked really closely, we got to everyone. It wasn't a huge storm, but it was a great way to start off the year when we haven't had much in in prior years, so I'm really proud of that, and people have asked me, it must be interesting to be the mayor during a a snowstorm, and my response to that is it's a lot less relaxing, I think, than other people who tend to enjoy cooking and whatever else they do, to watch movies or catch up with their family, but I I appreciate the chief and the head of, also doubles as the Office of Emergency Management for letting me harass him in the hours leading up to the storm, to find out what the latest weather report is, and his wife in particular, who's sitting next to him, for pulling him away from that stuff. And again, just to reiterate, the conference that I went to was really a great opportunity to be in DC and mingle with colleagues, and I appreciate that opportunity. There's a lot of, lot of still concern as to what's going on in the federal government right now, and just to make sure that we're carefully monitoring it. Obviously, the state of New Jersey is issuing guidance in different areas, like immigration and and other, from other perspectives, but we are going to be working closely together as mayor and council and community members to ensure that as people become aware of some of the impacts, that we're at least ready to respond, whatever that way may be. And hopefully, we can focus local and and continue to, you know, focus on the things that matter to us, but, you know, obviously, it's, you would also have to account for the fact that there are people in our community who are anxious right now, it's just, it's something that we just have to come to terms with, and we want to make sure that that people feel like they're being supported accordingly. With that, I'm going to move on to the New Business Consent Agenda. Council President?
Well said, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the New Business Consent Agenda Resolutions 2025-67 to 2025-85.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-86, authorizing the payment of the bill list in the amount of $8,238,055.74.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I make a motion to adjourn.
But a motion adjourn is your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?